I think we really know.
Oh, it won't be on the public.
Supposedly, uh.
I don't list them on the.
There is one, but Kirsten asked to watch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's the case.
We love it when they've got a tree on the hut seat.
Yeah, it's the next one.
This is every week.
Where the cameras at?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the January tenth, two thousand eighteen school board meeting, beginning with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How cute you guys.
I'd like to begin by apologizing for standing a little late. Our non-public went a little bit later than.
Sorry.
A little later than what we had anticipated. Superintendent, do you have any revisions to the agenda?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Summary of non-public actions from December two thousand, December twenty of two thousand seventeen, there were no non-public actions. Um, what I could do this time is I'll pass it over to, uh, to Bill. I think you have a couple of individuals you want to recognize.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so, uh, we're really fortunate at Campbell High School to have some incredibly supportive parents. Um, two of them are here with us this evening, and I'd like to recognize, um, first of all, um, Bonnie Kavanaugh.
Yeah, behind me.
Oh, there you are. Awesome.
Other side.
So, um, so Bonnie made herself known to the CHS community in a number of really important ways. Um, she's a very dynamic contributor to, to, um, what she does here at, uh, at Campbell High School. Um, she's regularly an attendant at our, at our PTO meetings, and she volunteers to assist with a lot of activities. Most importantly, Bonnie does know that food is the way to people's hearts, okay, um, to make them smile. So whenever we have a luncheon or a breakfast, breakfast for our staff, Bonnie is absolutely the one who's leading the way. Um, she prepares food, she bakes foods, she delivers food, she sets up food, she cleans up and takes down afterwards, probably the most important piece of this. And every single time I've ever seen her, she has had this incredible smile and sent, and laughed about the things that she's doing. So, um, when, when the PTO did their holiday Thanksgiving pie fundraiser, she was the one who coordinated all the orders. She was the one to make sure the food got prepared. She was the one who delivered them on that day to make sure that all those families that bought them and supported our programs and our kids, um, got, got what they had asked for. Um, she's also endeared herself to our family and consumer science teacher recently. They're coming in and baking vegan doughnuts. I was not there on that day to sample those, but I'm sure if they were like anything else she's ever done, um, it's probably pretty terrific. So anyway, on behalf of all the wedfed staff. At CHS, I do want to express our appreciation to Bonnie as our triple E winner for last month, um, at Campbell High School.
Thank you, ma'am. Maybe you're trying to get up and out of this area.
Okay, okay, great. So, um, so our second is, um, another wonderful member of our parent community. Um, Amy Goldstein is a, is another one of those really positive, energetic supporters. Um, she has a real passion for arts and for service. I first got to know her last year during the budget process when she made this impassioned plea for lockers for our music students. And it was amazing for me to see her, and I realized, okay, this is a woman I have to keep in contact with, okay? Um, she also, she again attends PTO meetings when possible, sharing ideas with the group. But this year, we're really fortunate because she's serving as the president and of the, of the CHS Friends of the Performing Arts. She has been a driving force behind our, um, as Jill Pennington calls it, our departmental swag. In terms of the clothing and the fundraising, um, clothing that, that we had for our performing arts this year. She was the brainchild by having students design, um, the logos for that. And she also was, um, the person who, um, got a different screen printing company, I believe, for us this year to make sure that those things were done well. Um, she, uh, she's also helping out with every fundraiser for the arts during the student performances. And she also, this is, has, has worked with Carolyn Lay to help, um, resurrect the LMS Friends of Music group. Am I, am I correct about that? Yep. So we know her, and this is from Jill Pennington. To be a collaborator, a listener, and a friend, and we are so grateful for her service. Thank you, Amy.
And the, the awards are given out right now are called the empower, Empowering Excellence in Education. And these awards are given out to, um, they could be teachers, educators, citizens, um, anyone who has an impact within the town on, on our children. So the third one is Mike Boski. And I'll, I'll stop by saying anyone who's either been on a soccer field, a lacrosse field, or a basketball court has probably heard Mike Boski. And then you see him. But Mike is very active in the town of Litchfield. Uh, currently the president of Litchfield Youth Soccer. He's a field coordinator for Litchfield Lacrosse Association, a member of the rec commission, and stepped up last year to coach the boys soccer at the middle school team. They had a very successful season. He's volunteered for many boards. I know you're on several of them right now. He's also, um. On the rec board, school building committee. He's always there for the children of Litchfield community. Mike gives his time to coach youth athletics in Litchfield and Litchfield schools, as well as assists with fundraisers and events and leagues may, may run. He maintains the condition of the sporting fields and helps repair them from maintenance. He continues to give back to the community. His tireless efforts toward improving the quality of children's lives is nothing short of amazing. Nothing is stronger than the heart of a volunteer, and we're thankful to have Mr. Boski in our community. And I, I know Mike for several years, and he, he's, he's always on the field, either trying to improve the field or coaching, but always there. And I'm sure there's been hundreds of kids that will tell you that he's coached them and coached them all. So Mike, congratulations. Do you answer the pictures?
Yeah, I do.
So, Bonnie? Photo one. You're in the background, guys. I'm photo one. You know, one thing I can say about the three individuals just received those awards that I think can group them all into like the same category of people who have given a lot for the community. And. Are very passionate about the community also, and passionate about what they care about and. Always have the children in mind. So, again, thank you very much, all three of you. Now bring us to correspondence.
I do not have any correspondence.
Superintendent comments?
Uh, we're into the, uh, almost into the second half of the school year. Um, we've had a bit of a delayed entrance because we had two, three, four days so far that we had no school. So I noticed that the high school, uh, was pushing their, uh, end of semester out an additional two days. Uh, in order to be able to accomplish all of the academic work they wanted to do, uh, and prior to giving final exams and things like that. So I, I think the major piece we've seen is that, you know, it's been a little bit of a, you know, lengthy first half of the year. We're hopeful that, uh, the weather gods will smile upon us the second half of the year, and we won't have too many more snow days. Other than that, uh, I, I think things are going really well. I'm really excited about, uh, what's happening in all of our schools with us kids, with, with so many different programs. It's really just, it's just really exciting to see so many things happening. I think we're all aware that superintendent, uh, search committee has been meeting and has been interviewing candidates. And I would characterize, uh, the search committee as, uh, just about through, uh, their, uh, phase of the, uh, process. And I think the next phase of the process will be when, uh, the school committee will start to, uh, actually interview the candidates and select finalists for the superintendent's position. And as soon as, uh, the school committee has had that opportunity, uh, and select finalists, uh, we will announce finalists publicly so that everybody will know, uh, who the candidates are, that are the finalists for the superintendent position. So that's about what I have to say at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. So that brings us to financial update from Mr. Sbicky.
Uh, provided my, my document for this board meeting, just a couple of things from it. Uh, the budget update, the public hearing for the, the budget is tomorrow night at CHS. Um, for the town and the school, there is also a bond hearing for the proposed fire station in town that will take place tomorrow night as well. Uh, the school deliberative session scheduled for Saturday, February tenth, nine a.m. at CHS. Uh, I gave to the board hard copies for the board members that wanted hard copies of the, the school district financial audit, um, that has been completed by Plazek and Sanderson. I also have digital copies if anyone would like those. Um.
I think that can be placed on the website.
Yeah, we can absolutely put that out there.
For the community if they want to see it.
Yep.
Were there any issues brought up?
Nope, no, nothing. Um, I think in terms, I do have a letter that was provided. It's called a letter to governance, uh, that the auditor sent for the board to review. There were a couple of findings noted. There were nothing, it was, uh, student activity related, just those type of decentralized areas that we always look to, uh, better our internal controls at. Other than that, so I will, um, actually tomorrow I'll send the, I'll send the copy of the letter to governance over to the board so you can review that as well. Uh, generally, we've got the food service department is preparing for, the state comes in, the DOE comes in, uh, to our high school in February. Will be doing their review. So I've been helping our food service director, uh, Janet Bellhumer, to prepare for that, for that audit. Transportation wise, snow flies and issues come up with our transportation. So I've been working with, uh, with First Student to, uh, rectify some of those things.
I think that's typical to expect that when you get temperatures as cold as we have for wind chills that.
Yep, buses break down, machines.
Vezos also not that easy.
Oh, yeah. So, working towards that, and then other than that, I will, uh, year to date financials. I'll be working on those for the, the next school board meeting. The one other piece I'd like to mention is that we have been approved for a Title IV grant, which will be for the Lego, uh, not Lego, but the robotics programs at Griffin Memorial School and the high school. So we are in process of trying to get those, those numbers together and get a final approval through to get those programs started.
Yes, we're, we're quick to, um, let First Student know when we're not absolutely satisfied with, uh, their services. However, uh, over the last two or three weeks, we found ourselves, uh, in need of transportation for, uh, students that were previously transported by Easter Seals. Because Easter Seals could no longer, uh, provide bus drivers, similar problem that we're seeing, uh, throughout the state, New England. And I, I would like to compliment First Student. They did step up, and they did provide transportation for the students that were no longer being transported by Easter Seals, for I think two of the students.
They took over th- there were four students. Uh, First Student took over three of the routes.
Three of the students.
And I believe it was Durham Services that's gonna pick up.
Yeah, so, I mean, when they do something good, we should say thank you. So, thank you.
And that's for me.
Good.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next is kindergarten. I know, um, we had discussion at our last meeting. Um, the board indicated they would like to still revisit the discussion at this meeting about kindergarten. I don't know if there are any questions. I know there was concern as far as the warrant from two thousand five. I know Michelle received information from our attorney. Um, and I'm not sure if that's all we were looking for, is just that information, or did anyone else have any other questions in reference to the warrant for kindergarten? I know one, one of the questions that, uh, Michelle asked. Was if the warrant article were to fail, would that then jeopardize the current kindergarten? Would not, because it's already in place, and it's just an extension of that, of that program. So. If it were to fail, which I don't believe it will, I think it'll pass.
I don't have that, but did, did not they agree that voters had already approved kindergarten for the last eight years?
Right.
And why are we having to do it as a warrant article?
Our attorney said we could have just gone ahead if we had the funds, which we did have the funds. I mentioned at the last meeting, we did have the funds, and we have a right as a board, and we could have just expanded to a full-time kindergarten. But the budget committee insisted we put on a warrant article and let the voters vote, and that's what we've done, and that's what we're gonna do.
I think that the school board should, at, at the meeting, um, tomorrow, as chair, uh, you should speak up strongly on behalf of the school board. Um, that the school board is not in agreement, or is our attorney's in agreement with the request of the budget committee. And the school board should be ready to ask the voters on February tenth to add back into the budget the five hundred and ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars that the budget can be removed. So that, um, uh, the voters can just vote on our budget instead of continuing to having to play games with the budget committee.
Well, the, the budget committee made the decision, John, so it, right now it's, it's in the public's hands. And I don't think it's right for us to go there as a school board at deliberative and ask them to put it back in. If citizens want to come and do so, then that's their prerogative, and they have a right to do so.
The school board can make the recommendation to for it to happen. The school board voted to have it as part of the budget.
That's correct.
So the school board should make the motion, make it part of the budget as deliberative. I mean, if we believe it should be part of our budget, then we should be willing to make the motion, speak out for it. And then the voters can decide whether or not they agree with us.
Anything else on kindergarten? Our student reps are not here this evening, right?
No, they're not.
Okay, so I saw that they're on here. All right. That'll bring us to community forum. Hope you're all pushing each other to get up here first. That's the community forum. All right. That'll bring us to school board comments, so.
What would they say?
Whoever they're like, they can stick where they are. Yeah. School board comments? Any, none?
I'll make a quick comment. Since Mr. Leffler is here, um, I just want to kind of commend the work that Robin Corbier's been doing in the computer class.
Mm.
Um, I know my daughter comes home every, every day, like, super excited about all the, all the app development here from Mobile Labs and all the circuit board programming they're doing.
Yep.
Um, she comes down, we have, I bought her some new ones for Christmas, too. She can do it at home now, too. She should come home and show me how to like wire up circuit boards.
Well, I haven't gone that far.
She can light up LEDs and stuff, boost up her commands and stuff. She does it. She's having a blast at it, and it's all, I think Robin Corbier kind of took that.
She's exceptional.
By the horns, he kind of ran with it and did an awesome job, so. Really appreciate that. Good stuff.
No, I'll pass that along. I'll tie you on tonight, because I'm, I'm sure a part of it is Robin, and I know a part of it is also how much more technology we've been putting into schools.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Um, and I, I know she played a big part of it, but I, I guess I just want to write on that as far as the technologies.
She's really, really great.
Oh, absolutely.
I know eighth grader just received their Chromebooks, and prior to them receiving them, I have an eighth grader. And every single day she'd come home, first thing she'd do is grab my laptop, because it seems we're doing more and more work on the computer. I was surprised to find out, when I asked her after her first day, um, that the two courses we kind of like pegged that they were going to be used for, Spanish and, and algebra. She didn't use them in those classes. She used them in another class, that she said they use it probably more often there, but I know it'll be expanding. So, and, and just the thought of like what we've done in the high school, and, and you can just see it just like flourishing and, um. Like, I, I can just see as the lower grades are gonna start, because now there's even, there's more technology now in the middle school especially, where, where all the eighth grader have their own Chromebooks, and now I know others are gonna be pushed down to the lower grades. But I, I think it's just really gonna put us in a very good situation the next couple of years, that, that as far as where we want to be. John, I know that we've had conversations, um, that the one-to-one, you know, wasn't like progressing as fast as we, we first hoped or thought it would. But, but I think with, in the high school now, every single student having a Chromebook, and now the eighth graders have a Chromebook, and before you know it, seventh graders will have a Chromebook. That, it, it's just going to be, I, I, I have a feeling that we're gonna be one of the schools that surrounding towns will be looking at as far as our program. And, and marvel at what we, we've accomplished in the short period of time. And it does take people like Robin Corbier and, and others that spearheaded in the high school, make, as, as far as, you know, starting the program, the one-to-one. And, and I, I think what we did as a board, as far as getting those Chromebooks in kids' hands, i- is gonna pay great dividends down the road.
And I think too, the, the, the amount of teacher interest, and, and, you know, that we had the Google Summit, and so many of our teachers went to learn how to do it, and, and the professional development that they're, that they're pursuing on their own. Um, you know, it's, it's coming right down to GMS, you know, I know with the Google Guys and Gals group that, you know, that meets regularly to just share resources. I think that's all a great thing. It's gonna be great for all, all of our students.
Yep. All right. Any other comments? We have public minutes from December twenty, two thousand seventeen, needing to be approved. Is there a motion? All right, for other discussion, hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Aye, sir.
Huh?
I abstain. I resent that.
Four zero one. All right. Next, we have some perk recommendations.
We have two new courses, and we have a revision, uh, a resource, and we're gonna revisit the PSAT SAT prep course proposal, um, which has the competencies in there. Um, as far as the Unified PE Health, um, that is a, a new course that is proposed where, for exceptional students who would benefit from adapted, uh, curriculum. And it's very exciting because they're gonna be, uh, learning about, uh, they'll be doing physical education activities, they'll be learning health, um, some CPR. Uh, and it's, it's a, it's a course that it's hard to talk about without talking about the next one, because they dovetail so nicely. Uh, the next one is the Unified Youth Leadership, and that's where our high school, high school students who are interested in pursuing fields of, um, uh, say, uh, phys ed or, uh, coaching or, um, counseling. Any of those fields will work with the, uh, Unified students, um, and see, uh, if they can help build up the tolerance, um, learn how to work with them. Um, and I think it's a wonderful program, and then the future vision would be to have, say, the following year, Unified Cooking with the Unified Leaders. And then the year after that would be another Unified, uh, Music with the Unified Leadership. So it's, it's an exciting, um, couple of programs that kind of go together.
Is this course for freshmen?
I'm sorry?
Is this course for freshmen?
On the leadership?
Unified Physical Education and Health.
Oh, those are, yes.
Freshman courses, correct?
Say that again. Oh, yes.
If they're for freshmen.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
It'd be for all, yeah, it would be for all ages, so if you have, um, first year, second year, sixth year, um, a, any student who needs the adapted program but still wants to work for full credit. You're getting full content, but you're doing it there, um, access level.
I'm just looking at it. I'm thinking this is a course that should be started at, taught in like sixth grade.
Yeah, yeah. By the way, this is Amy Paradise.
Nobody said no.
What's that?
This is Amy Paradise. She's a Litchfield resident, one of our teachers.
Hello. I'm new here.
Yes, so these are, these are your, um, your, um, significantly, um, challenged special education students. So they're really exceptional students. So these are the students who, in a traditional education, physical education classroom, would struggle to meet the, uh, the expectations of their classroom. Um, it's a common course that you have at other schools within the state. Alvin has something similar, Pinkerton has something as well, Guilford, number of schools. So you have your exceptional students, and then you have youth leaders working and collaborating in a, in a unified manner. So, um, it's a, um, it's a nice way to provide those, those, um, physical education activities. And also at the same time develop some, your, your neurotypical students' skills in, in leadership and teaching and instruction, some of those other things.
So, um, on the Unified Youth Leadership Program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why can't that be a sophomore project? Why does it have to be a class?
Um, I, I can see what you're saying. I think the, the idea is, um, you're talking about essentially going to offer credit to the students for that. It's, it's going to involve some significant training and collaboration.
I think it's a pass/fail class, isn't it?
For the, for the, I'm, let me look back at that, I'm. Is that pass/fail for the leaders?
No, it's a, um, it's a competency-based course.
Yep.
The idea is to have, uh, junior seniors who already have the prereq covered. They've already taken the health course, they've already taken the PE course. The difference is that they would need a little bit more support than an independent study, like a senior project or an ELL. Um, in this course, they would be learning structured. Um, they would be following some sort of a book study, they would be following guided, um, journaling.
Working with exceptional students.
Working, yeah, so, so we're teaching to two different levels in one class.
Yep.
With one instructor.
With two instructors, it's a, um, it's a co-top course. So you'd have a special ed and you'd have, um, content area.
Yep.
So, and then, so from there, what you're doing with the leaders is that you are teaching them how to be leaders. You're teaching them communication skills, you're teaching them empathy. Um, you're teaching them differences in our society before they enter the world. And these are people who want to teach, who want to work with kids, who want to run some of the fields that Mrs. Childress was talking about. So this is different than just independent run.
Yes, yeah.
This is where they're learning content in the area.
So there, and there are, and there are competencies for it, so there's critical thinking, problem solving, communication, collaboration. There are course competencies. It would be a half-credit, single semester course for any of those students.
It's an elective.
Yeah, it would be an elective, correct.
And it's capped at twelve, correct?
Yes.
Yes, combined.
So that's combined, so that's with your exceptional students with the leaders.
Yes.
For total.
So you were looking for a one-to-one there?
Essentially, but it's not mandatory.
So you could have four leaders and eight other students.
Agreed.
Yes, yeah.
And their pairs will be there, too.
Agreed.
Yep.
So how does that work in, um, how does that work? Because in, in, um. So you have the pairs, which are there to support the students. And, and in reality, these students in the leadership are actually taking the place. Through that, in that class, per se, of, of the, of the pairs. So how does that dynamics work out for the student who has a working relationship, knowing that. There's an issue, they turn to the pair.
Agreed.
And now they're having to, at least for ninety minutes, are having to turn to somebody else.
So it's a huge opportunity for modeling. We need to learn by example. So the, um, exceptional students need to learn by example, they need to learn diversity, and the leaders need to learn by example through the adults. So we're having these conversations together and then weaning off.
And are we modeling this program off of any other schools? I know you mentioned other schools, but who are we modeling this off of?
Pinkerton, I looked at Pinkerton, and I looked at Merrimack as well. I also went to, um, Easter Seals.
And why in the, um, education and health for the Unified Physical, it, you're mentioning, your paragraph, I know you're trying to be very correct. But in, in reality, it, you know, you're saying with or without disabilities, then in other sentence, you read it, and you'd see it's more geared to students with disabilities. So I know you're trying to, uh, you know, I mean, how does a student without disabilities arrive in this class?
They're a leader.
No, no, then they're in the leadership one.
Yes.
But how does a student without disabilities end up in this class?
I, I know, I think that, I think what that is, is that's just, it's sort of, it's sort of enmeshed in there only, only because of the course description. But those, the neurotypical student would have their own course running at the same time as this. So it's, I, I think we're, we're looking at the grammar.
No, no, I, I understand. I just, what I'm just saying, I don't want, I don't want students who shouldn't be in this class.
Correct, yes, yes.
Being able to say it says with or without. So I'm, I'm just, you know, again, I understand the whole process behind this. I'm just saying that.
I thi- I think, I think you're correct, John. I think it would be simple enough to have they, that next sentence, the Unified PE and Health Education Course is a course for special education, or for students with disabilities to, and.
Cause that's what this, this, I mean, we had the same conversation through math.
Yes.
Of how we wanted to get to different curricula, and we sort of made that path, and I just think that we, we need to make the path correct.
Mm-hmm.
In, in that sense.
Is this for one year or half a semester, and then again next year, or you're just gonna?
So the, the idea, um, a little bit that Ms. Childress, uh, touched base upon, my, my thought process for this long term is that we're offering, um, several content areas, um, for a year long. Cause we're, we're covering all the material, but we're doing it at the pace to the student. We're covering it for a year. Um, and then we're not gonna do it again the next year. You have a collection of kiddos that are gonna benefit from this. Let's then roll them into, um, kitchen safety, cooking. Let's then roll them into, um, kitchen safety cooking. Let's then roll, so that would be a second year. Let's say the third year running would be, um, personal banking. Um, let's roll in another year of, uh, music. Let's expose them to every kind of music, not just singing, not just guitar. Um, and then what happens from there is when you get into fifth and sixth year students, you're recycling. So you have kiddos taking PE health twice in their stay with us at Campbell and we're reiterating topics and we're teaching as we need to and we're building on their skill set. Um, and, and each of those would last a year, so that you really can grow and develop the child in that content area. For the leaders, you're doing one semester. Um, you're giving them the opportunity to choose a different elective for the second part of the year. Um, it can, this is an opportunity for kiddos to, to get into this and be exposed, but not become overwhelmed. Um, and it also exposes all kiddos with new relationships. We want the dynamic of new relationships and empathy and teaching change and, um, adapting. So, so the leadership program runs every semester for, let's say, six years as it rotates through different content area unified courses.
So the, the leadership courses basically run at the same time as the unified PE course and they're work, they're working together in the same school?
Yeah.
So when will we see the other course curriculum for food and banking and music and?
Next year. Next year.
Year after that.
Is that just gonna be a year, a year at a time?
Next year.
I'd like to propose them on next year if they'll let me. Give that, be, be push me back if you need.
She's already started. You were right, you're here.
I, I was, I guess, I guess she was.
If she wins.
Do you wanna go on to the next item or do we wanna wait and vote on, okay?
Yep. No, go ahead.
So the principles of, uh, engineering, that's just a revision where the, the, uh, title is, is proposed to change from principles of engineering honors to real life physics and principles of engineering. Um, it's reducing to a half credit, half, um, one semester, not a year long. And, uh, the rationale, uh, Ms. Roseanne Doobie, um, wrote down here, they're, they're trying to en- encourage more students to take the class. So that was her thought. Um, so that's, that's the revision there. If you had any questions on that.
Was don't swap the technique, hold.
I'm sorry, what?
It was in the curriculum report, there was number three, don't swap the technique, hip hop as a modern culture movement.
Oh, we're not, that is a change. Yes, that'll be next board meeting.
So that's bold, okay.
That'll be the next meeting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still working on that, uh, course of curriculum?
It's formatting, formatting the proposal, yep.
And last, oh, not last, we have snowshoe, uh, resource that GMS has put in and they're asking the PTO to fund snowshoes for their PE class.
So I have one question. They don't allow the kids to play in the snow now.
That's what they're gonna give shoes for.
So how are they gonna get in the snow with, now? What's different?
May I answer that question?
I'm just giving you a hard time, but, but, but.
Oh, no. We, we actually do allow the children to play in the snow. I did first and third grade recess the other day. The rule is they have to have five items, boots, snow pants, coat, mittens and a hat. But we actually have about thirty sleds, um, like the runnerless kind, so we're not injuring ourselves. But we actually use the hill, um, which I believe was put there for the purpose of sliding, um.
Or septic.
Yeah, or septic.
Now, that's not as good.
And in addition, um, you know, they do, they build snowmen, that kind of thing. So we do, wh- what we don't allow them to do is use the high structures, which don't have adequate, um, padding. When the ground is frozen and it's icy.
Yes, my daughter came home and said she had a blast sliding down the hills. Yes.
No, was it the middle school?
Yeah.
Is it middle providing you with snowshoes?
Um, they actually voted at the last meeting. This came up and I do wanna remind the board, cause this is, for me, was a complication. This was requested in the budget. It was also requested in the PTO, um, from the PTO, um, by Mrs. Gozone. So we talked about it really should only be in one place. However, the PTO with their, um, newfound, um, it came up again at the December meeting and I said I would like to bring it back to the board to get approval for the activity and go through PRC. But it is a great way, it helps every student, that's the biggest thing, cause every student in, actually grades K through four, um, will have PE. And I don't know that, I don't know that every student, I mean, every grade, I don't know that she'll do kindergarten snowshoes. I don't know that for sure. But, um, every student who has the capacity will be able to do this. It's an outside activity, it's aerobic, it's winter based, it's great for New Hampshire, so.
That's great exercise too.
Yeah.
And it gives them a blast.
Yeah.
Make a motion approve unified PE health, unified youth leadership, principles of engineering revision, revision and the snowshoe resource.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I was just wondering if, uh, Principal Thompson could, uh, send me a memo, uh, that I could use when I go snowshoeing, so I remember exactly what I'm supposed to wear. Appreciate that.
It's my thing.
It's in, it's in the minutes.
I remember five things.
By the way, you don't eat socks or shirt, but.
Kids of ice cream, snowshoes. I hope they do.
Huge, an attack.
Just like the five servings of fruits and vegetables.
Can I tell the PTO to order these snowshoes?
Um, yes, as long as they have the correct size information.
Oh, they do, yes.
Yes.
That's all adjustable.
They do. What's that?
I said they're all adjustable.
There, she's getting, um, she's planning to get, uh, I think it was fifteens, the smaller children's size and then fifteen and the larger children's size and then I think, uh, four, four or five pairs for adults.
For, for the adults to accompany.
So that other classrooms could use them too.
I'd say spread out in fifteen racks, sure, snowshoeing away.
The good thing about snowshoes is they don't get lost, cause they leave a trail.
All right.
Leave with thirty and come back with twenty nine.
Yeah.
She, I don't think she's done. So now we have the PSAT.
Yeah, once again.
NSAT class, and this time has the competencies. And, uh, do you have any questions?
Well, not, not the both Jody and Billy here. We had a discussion in the last meeting for the second time. And i- it's funny, cause that was, that's why, um, it's too bad the student reps aren't here, because we actually had an opportunity to ask them questions about the course. And two students who went through the process both agreed that it's really not a course. It, it's great. And they also told us how fast that sixty dollar fill up, filled up. So I can only imagine when you offer it for free, that there'll probably, you know, it'll be a lottery in order to get in. And the, the board had the discussion going back and forth and we can open up a discussion, but one of the things was that really, it should be offered to every student that wants to, to take the course. And should be offered at the cost of the high school rather than charging students sixty dollars. But I don't see it as, as a course. I, I see it as something that would benefit the kids. That I, I think would be fabulous if we could get them all, everyone who wanted to, um, the opportunity to take the course, to help them out with, with the PSATs. But to, to say that i- i- it falls in, um, as a course, I think the majority of us felt that it didn't. Okay? And I'm not sure if you wanna come back with an argument saying that it is.
I'm not sure.
Actually, I, actually, actually, I don't, I don't really, actually, I, I've had a chance to read this and to think about it. I don't know if it is a course. It's just a pass fail.
Yes.
I don't know how you fail. A PSAT class, maybe you don't show up for the classes, but that's a whole nother issue, but. So, so, um, I mean, i- it, it, it basically is just preparing.
Yes.
Juniors, eh, eh, which is in the fall of their junior year to take the SAT.
Spring, spring, spring.
But they'll take this class in the fall.
Oh, right, correct, yes, yes, yep.
Because they're testing in the spring.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, and then I agree with Brian that, you know, the one, the, the, when we offer it to one, now whether or not a hundred ten kids are gonna wanna take it. Hundred and ten sets of parents are gonna wanna take it. That, which is a difference. I mean, I mean, there, there is gonna be, and it may not fit in everybody's schedule, cause you're not gonna offer.
That's good.
I mean, you may have to, if you have so many kids that can, you may have to offer at different times during the day, but I don't know how you do that.
Well, they offer it after school now. So I think if we can maintain, um, it, it being given after school, because some kids can't take it and then offer it in school like you would plan to. Then we could probably accommodate everyone.
I mean, we, we talk so much about rigor though. Do we really want students, I don't wanna say wasting a block, but like spending a block on learning how to take a test?
Well, I don't, you could spend a whole week on word roots or Latin roots, just on the English portion of it.
Yes, yeah.
That's the way I'm looking at it. You're breaking the things, the key things.
We, I would rather my son take this than a study hall.
Yeah.
To be quite honest with you.
Yep, yep.
Or you can probably offer twice after school, you know?
My son won't be able to take it after school ever.
I think it's fantastic. I still don't know why offer it to school. Offer, offer stipend after on Saturday, offer it after school, offer.
Or two stipends, or two, well, right now you're doing it after school.
Yeah.
So if you could get two stipends to do it.
Well, we, we may be. We're surveying the students right now, I think, to get a sense of that.
I, I did email you some of those, um, results. Um, the idea of offering in school is because we have a number of kids at the high school level that take drivers at after school one semester. They play sports after school, they have jobs after school. So the after school option is just not an option for them.
And I agree. I mean, and, and that's what I'm saying, that if we can find a way to do it and like, you know, you mentioned study halls, yeah, I'd rather see them doing this in the study hall.
I'd, I mean, you know, it's so for, you know, for me on a personal level, for my kids, they're moving into the age of needing this. So I will vote for it just for that reason, but, but I, but I also believe, uh, that, uh, high school kids are very busy. And this is a, a chance for them to, I mean, I just got, I mean, I got Joshua's scores. He did very well, you know, on his, on his scores and stuff. And, um, uh, but it was funny, cause as we were reviewing the, it was amazing, they actually give you back the tests and the answers on the back page. That's phenomenal. Wish I could have had that when I took it, but, um, uh, you know, what we found was that he had the correct answers in the workbook. He just can't serve right. Or he didn't trust his answer in, in that, in that process.
It's a traffic thing, I can see that, yeah.
So, um, I, and, and he'd never taken, other than in a class where it was, you know, fill it out and turn and the teacher scored that way on a multiple choices. This is his first time taking it and, um, he felt good, but he, he had it on his list of classes. It was one of the top three of his classes to take in the fall this year. So it was, it's important, it was important to him without us saying anything to him. Um, so, um, I think that, that is reason enough, um, that I would, I think, I mean, if, if it, if it's not working out in two years, then you can, the school, the, the school will come to us and say, hey, this isn't working out, we're gonna try something different. But I, but I think as, just to try it, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea.
Especially hearing from the kids how fast that c- the course filled up, the after school one. They said if you weren't there like right away, you weren't getting in. So it just shows you how many kids, you know, really wanna take this.
You know, I, I agree, it's definitely much more important than a, a study hall. I agree that students are super busy after school and all weekend stuff that I totally get that. Do you think it's worth half a credit towards a Campbell high school program?
Well, it's a pass fail, so I don't believe it is, it's accounted towards a diploma. But, but it may be a half a credit, but I, I don't think pass fail classes count towards graduation.
Right, but we don't wanna make them half credit. We just wanna offer it.
Well, no, right now it's being posted as half credit.
It would be, it would be for credit. It would be for a half a credit. An elective credit. It would not count as a math required, meant it would not count as a language arts.
That's why I started the conversation though, that we had a conversation that we didn't feel that it was a half credit course.
Yep.
We felt that it was essential for them to take it, but I don't, I don't see it as a half credit.
I do.
Well, we gotta look at it this way. They have eight credits that they take in that year. So if you take, you take a half, there's only seven and a half credits in that, in that year for that student. Um.
And I, and I, you know, I, I do think in many ways the skills and the understandings and the habits that they'll be taught in those classes are worthwhile and meaningful skills. Um, it's about, you know, motivation incentive, it's about planning, preparing, it's about test taking, it's about how to approach. It's a lot of different things in there that are, that I think are valuable skills for students. Half credit, okay. Um, I can see the challenge with that, but we're not talking as if these are not skills that are transferable skills to them at some point further down the road. Now, I think that a stronger argument in some ways is the whole value of test taking and the value that we put in that. And what does the SAT mean in terms of a student's educational program? It is a factor among many factors that colleges consider, but they're also considering how many honors and AP courses you're taking, your overall GPA. They're looking at, um, your extracurriculars and your athletics and your honors and your awards and those other things. But it is a piece of that, of that puzzle, you know, so, but it, again, and I'll speak from my, my perspective on this as far as test taking. I was not a great, I mean, I did okay on the SATs, but that wasn't the deciding factor about where I was gonna go, what I was gonna be. So I don't put huge, huge, huge value in the SAT, but it is a part of our students' lives and it traditionally has been. To me, I think the skills, I think the knowledge, I think the understandings are, are worth a half a credit. And I, maybe that's more of a passionate appeal than a logical appeal on this, but I do think it's, it's worth a half a credit.
I guess the way, uh, another way to look at it is that, you know, our eighth graders are actually coming to high school with, or some of them are gonna come with a full credit. They're gonna have, or two credits, cause they're gonna have one for Spanish and one for algebra, so, um, um, you know, I, 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 I think there's.
If, if, I think if, i- if I may, John, I think if you think about credits that students earn at Campbell, I was looking at the graduation, uh, this class that have graduated since, graduated recently. And we, we have about eighty percent of our students get twenty-six or more credits. We require only twenty-four, so only about twenty percent of our students get just the bare minimum number of credits to graduate from high school. So our students are willing to accept and raise and, and, and motivate and go for, go for more. I think, um, one of the pieces of this is it's only a half a credit and that fits so much more readily into student schedules than a full credit does. It, I think it would be a good option for a lot of students and it would be far more easy in some ways to fit that into sp- into, into kids, um, into students' programs and into their schedule. So, um, so I think our kids are earning lots of credits. That would, this would be a half credit they could, they could potentially grab onto as well. And I don't, it's not gonna hurt them, right? It's not gonna hurt them. And I think for a lot of students, if we do this well and if the standards are high enough and rigorous enough, I think they're gonna benefit, benefit significantly.
And it's just an elective.
It's an elective. It's not covering their math, it's not covering that extra math enabled, or math embedded course thing, or an English language arts credit, no.
I, I just wanted to say, I, I know that the, the title of the course is PSAT and SAT, but the skills and the resources that they will take out of it will be able to be applied in all tests for midterms and finals and standardized tests such as science, NECAHS and everything else that they will be taking throughout their high school time. Even if we started as juniors and eventually it trickles to freshmen and sophomores, they will be a- able to apply it through all their years in high school on every standardized test that comes up, even if it's just the midterm and final after the SATs.
So I have a, I'm kinda seeing a parallel here, because do we still run, um, freshman seminar?
Yes, yes, we do.
That is one credit, only as a half credit, or is it one semester?
Yep. Semester long course for a half credit.
And in that class, the objectives are to teach skills like organization and, and that kind of thing.
Yep.
And, you know, done well, done rightly, it should be, it, it benefits their whole, their whole high school career. So I see this as kind of a, a parallel course, just.
I think it's more intensive than freshman seminar, way more intensive.
Well, yeah, it should be. It's for junior, you know, it's for.
I'll make a motion to move it into the curriculum for the coming year.
A second.
If a student takes it after school, they also get that credit? Is it the same for school?
That's our, that's our plan. Yeah.
So we, we won't be charging students an after school?
No, no.
Is there a second?
Me.
I said it. I did.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstain.
Can I take a note, Brian? I think we have to.
Mr. Chip, do you have a chance, have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we have to be careful about the after school. I beg your pardon.
You're that person in the movies, huh, John?
We might have some more, um, students.
Nothing, no.
Nothing, no.
After school part portion, his teacher contract, then all that.
It's a stipend right now. What's that? Oh, it's not.
So we gotta work on that.
That's being offered now anyway, so it's just another.
We can do it.
Well, that's right, that, this is the, this is the stipend, it's not a stipend, I forgot.
Oh, it's it's grand, okay.
We do stipends on that.
Sorry, my mistake.
I remember now. That's the only one, that's the only one, right?
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Chip? Actually, it's two questions, um in terms of budgetary impact, uh do you anticipate any budgetary impact in terms of teaching and staffing in order to be able to make this happen to uh one hundred and ten students versus twenty or thirty or forty students? And second question, uh when you're doing your scheduling for next year, if you're going to schedule this after school as a half credit course. How does that bump into the CBA, what kind of challenges will we have in terms of scheduling teachers to teach those after school? Just a couple of questions, I'm not looking for answers for right now, but I think there are two questions you've got to answer before you can successfully implement.
Will the after school be a stipend position, right? And is stipend non stipend position?
Well, and that brings up, that.
Were you there for that one?
In all fairness to.
It's stipend now, but it's not a stipend position.
In all fairness to the current audience and the fact that we're on public TV, uh if it's a stipended position, then that would also have to go through the CBA required. Uh vetting by the uh Education Association and be approved uh by the Education Association as a stipended position. And it would seem to me that if you're going to have it as a, would this meet every other day uh for a semester, in essence, if it was during the school year?
It would, it would meet as a regular semester long course, is my assumption.
So out of the ninety days, or out of the ninety days for a semester, it'd be forty-five days for ninety minutes.
Uh well, how, we haven't even discussed that.
Well, how else would you put it in your schedule?
Any Monday, Monday.
After school.
No, no, I'm saying during the regular school day. It's, my point being that if it's meeting forty-five times during the school day for ninety minutes for a half a credit. If you're going to offer a half a credit for the after school program, would it have to be consistent in terms of duration and time?
Correct, yes.
And and so you would be loo- looking at something which would be significantly more duration than the program you are currently offering, which to my understanding was very brief.
It was a six week, six week program.
Yeah, so I'm just saying that you've got some financial issues, you've got some scheduling issues, you may have some CBA issues, which you're going to have to address.
The other thing you can look at too is is just continue offering the after school as you do now, and then the one within the school day would be a different program.
So be, perhaps be, is the after school currently accredited program?
Well, that's what our initial, uh initial plan would be.
It's not, sorry.
It's not currently accredited.
No, it's not currently, no.
So I I think the board chair's got a good point, you could, you could perhaps offer the after school as a, as it currently is and have a non accredited course, which wouldn't have to comply with your same amount of time. So I think those are just things you'll have to work on, I think it's a great idea, it's a great program, I just think you've got some, some things to work through.
So I'll bring us to the curriculum report.
So we have our course recommendations, um. Sorry?
I didn't know if you had anything else.
No, really don't, unless you have a question on the report itself, okay.
Okay, thank you, um.
You have homework, you're perfectly free to leave now and go get your homework done, or whatever. Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Um I have a few recognitions, I'd like to begin with Jessica Saboner and Kristen Stavitt, um third grade teacher and art teacher. And they actually are responsible for um writing and submitting um with Mr. Isbicky's help. The grant for the Lego Robotics League, and as you are aware, the grant for ten thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents was approved, it's title for money, so that's really exciting, and they are working to get um that up and running. In anticipation, I think because of so many schools getting this money, um they have actually moved out the May, the spring Lego Robotics Meet to May, which is great, because we'll have a little more time to get ready. Um originally, it was March, but they know schools are gearing up. I also want to acknowledge Mary Lou Saxton, I can't show you the video because um the teachers participated on the condition that it would not be on YouTube. However, it was really fun, uh we did something to the song Happy um by Feral Williams. And we all um showed the kids what we do after school. So for example, um Mrs. Clinton Jones and I were on Playset, even though it was frozen. Please don't um point that out for the kids, and um those kinds of things, we just had a lot of fun with it, but it took a lot of time for our. Um I also wanted to acknowledge, just for volunteers, we all know that Mrs. LaBelle runs a great concert and a great program. But she has volunteers, for me, this is outstanding, they began, I believe, when their kids were in chorus. And that was maybe fifteen years ago, and they've stuck on all this time, and they're still volunteering. So um thank you to Mrs. Labatt, who does choreography for free. Um this year, Janine Angtel, Joanne Shodri, and Bob Towne were general volunteers. Bob Towne is also the videographer, and um also, we have two paraprofessionals, Dee Brink and Cameron Santum. Who we pay to assist, but they go way above and beyond what they need to, all of which helps the chorus be such a success. So thank you to all of them. Um I'd like to mention that our Director of Curriculum and Instruction Assessment, Nancy Childress, is also a children's author. And will be presenting um assemblies to our students tomorrow. Um Nancy is, and perhaps this is known, but not to the general audience, she is the model for Sally in the Dick and Jane books. And her dad was the illustrator, and she also, she's gonna be talking about that and her own books tomorrow with students in grades K through three. I'm very excited that we were able to get together a visitation to the Learning Commons at Paula's Primary School. And thank you to Paula Isbicky for helping to arrange that uh with me. But we sent our Assistant Principal, the Computer Instructor, the Librarian, and a Primary and Intermediate Classroom Teacher to put an eyes on what a Learning Commons looks like at the Primary and Intermediate Level, well, their Primary. Um so they came back and we made a a bulleted list of things that we already are starting to do to now kind of move ahead. So um I know we've been a little slow getting there, but I want you to know that we sent a team and we're looking at what we can do. New Frontiers is growing again, I just wanna mention that, um thank you again to um Tina for being the organizer of that, but we have two things that are exciting. Um one is Google CS First, which I think is Computer Science First, and it's actually a programming kind of thing. That Mrs. Planty is volunteering to do on Mondays, um her target is fourth grade. And also, Mrs. Clinton Jones and I are gonna do something to kind of uh kick off the winter doldrums with kids called Brain Games. And we're gonna do things like Sudoku's and other kind of word and number based games with kids for five weeks, starting at the end of uh January. Something pretty exciting for me happened, um that I think is interesting because of current discussions that we're having about kindergarten. Um I went, had been to the National Center for Education Statistics a few times, looking for data about kindergarten. And I had to register when I did that with my name and email address. Um so they contacted me, and they asked me to be um part of a focus group. And um I spent about ninety minutes last night in a conversation with their marketing people. And principals from West Virginia, Virginia, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, and New Hampshire. Um and what they're looking at, and I think this is an interesting thing to know, is a new study looking at the um competencies of incoming kindergarten students. And um comparing that with data that their parents, who willingly participate, provide about at home kind of things that they've done in preparation for school. And they're doing that not only with three thousand students in this country, but a similar number or representative sample from countries all over the globe. So we got to preview their materials they're sending out and give principal feedback, it was kind of an interesting conversation, actually. Um a big, exciting event coming up, the Third Annual PTO Trivia, Trivia Night. I had a conflict last year, for which I apologize, but um the the real goal of the event is not to have fun and to, but to rather to regain the title, which the high school stole last year. We will, that's coming up on the twentieth. And the other thing I wanna mention, because it's such a great example of commu- um cooperating between school groups. The CHS Spirit Team is going to be sponsoring a February Cheer Camp for all children of Litchfield, Hudson, and surrounding areas ages five and up on February Vacation at GMS. So I think that's a really exciting kind of thing for them to do, I assume it's raising money for them and it provides a great opportunity.
I have a comment, I signed myself up to lead a Lego, a Lego club today for New Frontiers, so I'll be joining you on Thursdays.
Excellent.
Glutton for punishment.
Good.
I would just like to thank Mr. Thompson for becoming involved in the national study group and being on the forefront of research in terms of what really does make a difference to incoming kindergarten children, and then being able to use that kind of current research to make us a better school district, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, now that our middle school is starting to get one on one, is there a keyboarding class, what, how, do we have a typing class? Remember back in the day, we all, well, I didn't, other people did.
So, we do, we use a program called Typing Pal, which is web based, so um we have computer class now, it's a halftime position. So we have it built into the special schedule, meaning every four or five days, depending on the grade, um for grades two, three, and four. So they do Typing Pal, it's a self correcting, you know, beginning with the home row kind of thing.
I think it's just building upon what, I mean, it's painful to see kids typing like this at the high.
There are, there are teachers out there and everything else right now, don't even push as far as typical typing anymore.
Well, it doesn't have to be the hands on the semicolon and all. Well, kids don't know how to do anything, they're all, only video game, they only use their thumbs.
They just, they type differently, they do, they just type differently than than.
Gram Saster than I am.
Yeah, and it's not with the two hands, it's just.
No semicolon thing, whatever.
I just have a question for Derek, when, when do you think typing will become obsolete with, you know, Dragon Speech and all that, are we gonna have to type in the future?
I don't know, like, I can't type, if you guys have seen me type, I'm.
That's why I know, I have the same deficiencies.
Fine, but I mean, I wish I could type.
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna go hand in hand with cursive writing.
Okay, okay.
I wish I could write cursive too, though, so.
I I use Dragon Speech all the time, it's just so much easier than typing, for me.
Like, I have to write on whiteboards a lot.
Do they put exclamation points when you give them that real hard? Go back to school for it.
One observation, I use typing a lot, and I did do typing in high school, for which I'm eternally grateful. Cause when I'm doing a classroom observation, I cannot speak into the computer, because it's gonna be really disruptive. But I can, also because I was a pianist, I think, I can type as fast as somebody can talk, for the most part. And I just saw Mr. Leck lie, they're just going a million miles an hour, so.
It was that old school correction tape, the old typewriter, you know, I still remember, I'm standing over my shoulder.
It is a useful skill, so.
Yeah, it definitely is useful, a lot of meetings, like you can't talk in a meeting.
Okay, the middle school, uh it has been a very busy month, a very exciting month, um thank you for the uh recognitions earlier. I'm gonna start with the one to one model, um the rollout, uh it couldn't have gone any smoother. Leading into this, the last several weeks, we've had many meetings, um and first, I wanna recognize Campbell High School. Mr. Perez has been instrumental in just sort of, you know, lessons learned over the, over the past several months. Um in addition, uh Jason Pelletier and Brendan Collins have been right alongside uh him. And so we've had several meetings leading up to this, um and then just all the logistics around our office staff, Leslie Pierce, Andrea Hamilton. Um a lot of coordinating there, um so we did our, so our original night was last week, we had the snow day, so we went to Monday. And we weren't sure how, being that it was postponed, everyone's busy, how the, how the turnout was gonna be and whatnot, um it was standing room only. Uh we did about a fifteen minute presentation, and every single Chromebook has been distributed as of this morning, so we have a hundred percent distribution. Um that includes a student who's uh half homeschooled, you know, things like that, that, little things like that, um little challenges um that have gone really well, so um thank you, thank you for your support, um as, as you recognized earlier. Uh the staff is just, just watching this, this sort of transition over the last few years, really, is when, when we've, we've really started to really integrate this on a, on a regular basis, and um the staff has just worked so hard on um learning the, the, the resources, and um it's not just putting a computer, and I've said this, but it's not just putting a computer in front of, in front of uh kids. Um but it, it's, that's just a tool, um but it's really learning how to use that tool to maximize learning and to bring, bring these skills to life, and uh and we're seeing that, we're seeing that every day. This is a very strong team, the eighth grade team, in terms of technology integration. So I think in terms of the rollout in our building, it's a, it's a, it's just a really perfect way to do it. Um and they've, uh you know, we have Study Sync for Language Arts, we have uh um Big Ideas Math. Um and Project Lead the Way for Science, just three examples of curriculum tools that have digital resources embedded already in them, so um there's nothing additional we have to pick up, there's, that's already happening. So um it's just been really exciting, and the kids were using the computers, as you mentioned, they were using them uh day one, and um I know, I got a cou- a couple of calls from parents, now, we wanna get them a, a case for Christmas, you know, what kind of, what's the sizing and stuff? So it's been, it's been a lot of fun, there's been a lot of enthusiasm around it, and so again, thank you for, for all of your support uh with, with that.
By the way, you could probably make a fortune, just having that stuff on hand and selling it to the kids, because.
It's true.
Well, there are schools that have taken.
Amazon is making a killer offer.
Middle School bag, selling like the, the, so.
I posted the link on the eighth grade parents page that I posted, the one I bought for Laura, so.
Yeah.
Several parents were like, thanks.
My wife's working on some things up at our house right now, we're gonna, we're gonna unveil some things. Later this spring, yeah, got some entrepreneurial, okay, we'll be in touch, we'll be in touch.
Um so the last month, very exciting, a lot of e- events, uh we had our concert, our holiday concert uh before break. And Carolyn Late's doing a lot in our district right now, um but I, it's amazing, every time you go to one of, one of the, the concerts, one of her concerts. Um just the, the amount of preparation that these kids, you see the transition from fifth to sixth to seventh to eighth. Um but just really impressive, again, uh this, this fall, the, the preparation going into that. And then also, uh with our new choral program, um the new uh layout there, uh Mr. Lammy, just a great job. And the kids really, um you know, we're growing that slowly, um but uh it was really neat to see um the enthusiasm and, and the pride um there at the concert. And then, very exciting news, uh it's, it's a challenge to, to audition for the New Hampshire Honors Band. Um it's a great challenge to actually be selected to it, so we had eleven students who auditioned, we had nine who were selected, that might have been mentioned last month, but that's, that's the largest number of kids, but certainly the largest percentage of kids we've ever had. Um so congratulations to Carolyn and to uh those nine students who are, who are listed there in the report. Uh we have our Geography Bee coming up, um that's actually re- really exciting event every year. Um it's a great forum for some of our kids to um sort of show off their skills, and Kathy Sidlow again, coordinating that this year, so. Uh we have our finalists listed there, and that is happening on the nineteenth of January, coming up in a couple of weeks. I wanna recognize Mary El Maderos, uh she's been on staff for, for a long time and been involved in our Giving Tree. This year, again, we raised over twenty-five hundred dollars for needy families, um Ms. Maderos plans to retire this year, so this was her last year um coordinating the Giving Tree, but I just wanted to recognize many years of service that she's. We also had an event before break, a new event at the school, a three-on-three basketball tournament, I think I had mentioned that last month. It culminated in our finals during our pep rally, very spirited pep rally before break, and so thank you to our Student Council for all their work. We had not only forty-five students involved, but we had many students coming to the games and participating in that, either selling refreshments or just being involved cheering on their, their classmates. So thank you again to our Student Council. And we have a more recent event that we've been doing as a school community, led by Mrs. Tarr, called Celebrate the Season, and there's a number of things that happen in our, in our school with many staff involved, one of them being a gingerbread house contest, which is incredible, I think some of you saw those. So I just want to recognize Teresa and all of her work, we had a great turnout this year, again, for that, for that event. Curriculum and assessment, so just kind of an update on, on what we're doing with PBIS and resiliency this year. Resiliency is sort of the theme of the district, and our PBIS program, every year, it kind of takes on a different, different look in terms of how we approach school culture and, and community and those things. This year, we're playing off of that resiliency theme and focusing on, each year, we have a focus for each quarter. So typically, we'll take our best theme, believe in yourself, extend a helping hand, show respect, take responsibility, and do a focus for each quarter. First quarter, we really introduced the resiliency idea. Second quarter, we did presentations, I was involved in that, actually doing the presentations with our guidance department and, and so forth on integrity. And, and then that culminated just before break with an integrity-themed meme contest, which went really well, we had many submissions, and the winner was Mary O'Neill, congratulations to her, but we had some great talent showcased in the meme contest, so. And then our, our next rollout is gonna be the respect theme, and, and so the way, the way we do this with the PBIS is, we do kind of a general presentation, and then we really drill into the, the enrichment groups. So they, they focus then in smaller groups, and all the teachers are involved in that, and then it usually culminates in some kind of an activity. So that's where the, the meme contest came from. I think you know, we have a presenter coming in April on digital citizenship, so that is gonna play into that show respect theme in, in April, but we're looking forward to that, we'll be building up to that over the next several weeks. The Learning Commons, just an update, that meme contest that, that I mentioned, Amy Prevental did a, a nice thing in the library around that, and she developed a Google site for the kids to submit their, their, their memes, and she's been doing a lot of work with our staff at monthly staff meetings, presenting different resources, different websites, different apps for the, for the Chromebooks, and just want to recognize her ongoing work, and she continues to work with Plymouth State on transitioning to our, to our Learning Commons. Our Grading Reporting Committee for the district continues to meet, we're meeting about once a month at least, and then our Building Committee is continuing to meet, and we're making some progress on, we're working on, as Campbell did last year, a retake policy as part of a district kind of initiative on that, and we're also looking at integrating more information on our report card, hopefully for next year, with competencies listed on there, gives more information on students' learning and where they are against those competencies. And then, believe it or not, we are almost, we are almost going to release a schedule for our spring testing, which will be this year a different look, the Smarter Balance is no longer in New Hampshire, it's called the New Hampshire Assessment this year, very original name, the New Hampshire Assessment. That will include science this year, so it will be math reading, math reading and English Language Arts, and all of that will be online. So the kneecap was the, that was the state's science test, that now becomes the New Hampshire Science Assessment, and that folds into the other, the other pieces. So fifth and eighth grade now is the science assessment, in the past, that's been fourth and eighth grade, so now that, that becomes another part of our scheduling nightmare, fun, that we, that we have in the spring. Now, it, it's, it's actually, with the Chromebooks, it makes it much easier, so it's, we're, we're thinking it's gonna, it's gonna be probably our smoothest, smoothest year yet, as far as all that scheduling. And then, just a couple of notes, athletics, our boys and girls' basketball, continue their seasons, playoffs are the end of January. Alice Training is coming up in March, and we're building up to that, Mr. Rizbicky and I had a conversation today about setting up all the staff so that they can do the online training course, that will happen before the March onsite training, so we're planning for that. And the last day of second quarter is now the twenty-sixth of January, that's a Friday, due to the snow days, so, couple of weeks.
How come we have different schools ending on different days for the semester? The high school starts a new semester on the twenty-fourth, LMS hasn't ended the semester till the twenty-sixth.
I can tell you, ours is forty-five days exactly each quarter, so we take one-hundred-and-eighty days, forty-five quarter, per quarter, so we count out forty-five days, and if we have a snow day, then it just moves out another day, so that each quarter's gonna be forty-five days.
So how do you do it?
How do we do it? Well, we were looking at four snow days, or four days off. Really what we looked at is the crunch for teachers at the end of the semester with missing two important days.
I understand that, but if, if it's forty-five days.
Right.
I know math is, forty-five days for either school ends, should end up on the same day, because I, I don't know of one school being closed and another one not.
Typically, that's not the case, yes.
What is GMS ending there?
We didn't meet, we didn't meet.
The twenty-fifth?
So we don't actually try to make it exactly forty-five days, we typically end it on a Friday, and just 'cause it seems to make sense in the instructional week, but we, we can be like forty-three to forty-seven would be a range. So we did look at, did we have to move the second quarter, and determined that we didn't. We actually have only had, I was thinking it was more, but we've only had two snow days in the second quarter. The others were in October, and I was thinking they were in the second, so we did not change it.
So when does your quarter end? Friday?
Yes, it's the, no, 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 it's like, probably it's the twenty-sixth is what I would say.
This worked out well now for us, because it, it is a Friday, but.
Do we at least end the school year on the same day?
We hope. For seniors, maybe not. That could be a little different.
We'll end on the one-hundred-and-eightieth day. That's, that's our plan.
The answer to your question is, yes, the school year will end in the same day.
Yes.
Excepting seniors, and no, the midsemester doesn't, and I, I, I don't mandate a specific date. We, we calendar a date, and then that is variable by snow, by other things that might occur within the buildings, and we don't have any hard and fast rule that the principals and I get together and say, everybody's gonna have midsemester, we just let that, to each principal to make a decision as to what's best for their building.
It sounds like Friday would fit in well for Wolf Field.
No more snow days before then.
Correct.
We end the twenty-sixth, just to confirm. I was thinking that was it, but I wanted to.
The report cards will be available the Tuesday after, or a week in.
So once the quarter closes, we give, the teachers have a week to turn that in, and then we have a verification day in the office, and then the next day, so it'll be the Tuesday after that.
And I was going to be, going home on Friday, the, I think it's the ninth of February, because they have time to correct and then enter all of the stuff, and then we print them all.
And we don't print them, but our parents will, the portal will open for them on the thirtieth.
And is there any changes to LMS based on the changing in your demographics and the number of teachers that you're gonna have?
I believe I'm bringing a report to you in February on that.
Okay.
I asked the, I asked Tom to give us a complete report on how demographics are impacting LMS in terms of curriculum, scheduling, classes, staffing, and Tom's gonna be putting that report together for us in February, I believe that's what the board directed me to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Longigan.
Well, I'd like to start with saying that CHS was struck pretty hard this past week with the passing of Dr. Angie. It, it hit our staff and it hit our students pretty significantly, and it was, it's been a sad week in some ways. I do want to say thank you to the board and to Tom and Scott, because they've been really supportive to us during the past few days. I also want to thank a couple of other groups. Our Student Council held their Holly Ball on December eighth, and the money that they raised from that, which is usually a pretty successful fundraiser, they donated to Dr. Angie for financial help with their expenses. And the LEA also, they sponsored a Dress Down Jeans Day at the school and raised some money to, to contribute to Dr. Angie. So one of the things I was told when I came to Litchfield was this, that the students are amazing and the community is just terrific, and I do want to say thank you on behalf of our staff for all the support that they've given us over the past few days here, given the, the struggles that we've been facing. So I just want to say thank you to you and to the community in particular, that's been really important to us. As far as our school report, no enrollment changes, that's stayed the same as in past months. We had six of our students who were honored at Pinnacle and Academy through their Career and Technical Education Honor Society, so we're thrilled for those six students who were recognized there. Southern New Hampshire held a onsite Acceptance Day here, and six of our students were accepted into SNU for the eighteen-nineteenth school year, and I want to say congratulations to them. Our theatrical students did an amazing job with their performance of The Drowsy Chapron, and if you did not have a chance to see it, you missed a terrific performance. Jill Pennington and Carolyn Late, between the theatrical and the musical direction, just did an amazing job, and our students are so cha, so talented, so, so that was just so much fun, and so I just want to give a shout-out to them for that. We had twenty-two athletes who were recognized by, by the NHIAA as first and second-team All-State, and so I really want to congratulate those students for their success. As to our staff, Kelly Fraser, a, a English teacher, put a typo in his report here, received the Golden Bell Award, not the Golden Apple Award. My wife got a Golden Apple Award in Florida, and I think I was running sick back to the weather there when I was writing this. We, in, over the, prior to the break, our PTO, I mentioned Bonnie and her good work, they, the PTO sponsored a holiday cheer breakfast for us on Monday, the eighteenth, and that was terrific. And we also had the Student Council providing us a breakfast, and they do this annually, and that was just a nice, a nice treat. It's really important, I, I mean, I said that jokingly previously, but food is a nice way to send people off and to greet them and to do those things, so we're fortunate to have, to have that support from, from those folks. Speaking of the holiday break, one of the really nice things that I, I was amazed by was the, the support of the Litchfield PD, as well as the Campbell High School staff, our Student Sunshine Fund, we, we donated over eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to, to some of our needy students to help make their, their break a little better, and I will tell you, the looks on their faces and the, and the thank yous as they went out the door later on during the day, really, really made that time kind of special for me, so that's a, that's a nice thing to be a part of, and again, I think it speaks to our larger community. As far as instructional assessments, we did receive our PSAT test results, I think our sophomore's and juniors did better on average than the state, and better on average than, than the national results, and those breakdowns will be provided in the back of the report there. I do want to, I do want to touch base briefly on our ELO Committee, Extended Learning Opportunities Committee. It was one of the focuses this year that has really wanted to sort of raise the ante and up the bar in terms of what those experiences will mean for our students. In some ways, it cut down on the number of ELOs this year, and many of our ELOs were not rigorous, they were not really challenging. So, so Jody and Justin Ballou, one of our teachers, are doing a really nice job of sort of putting together what this, what this program should really look like as we move forward, and I think, as we move forward into next year, I think we'll have some significantly meaningful changes to what that program looks like, so I'm, I'm optimistic about that. I do want to talk a little bit about the one-to-one program, I think there are some things in this report that I think are worth discussing. We did have three of our NHS students come into our administrative meeting prior to the break, and the typical feedback about how well they're doing in courses, how challenged they are, the kind of time they have to put in to manage things, but the one thing they, they all reported was finding the one-to-one program really useful in their classes, and the challenges were, were, were minor. They actually had more to do, less with the Chromebooks and more with their student email accounts and some other minor glitches that we're able to take care of for them. But, but I think talking to the students is a good way to figure out what's going on. I will also say that when I walk through classes, it's, it's routine, seventy-five to eighty percent of the classes I walk into, and my walkthroughs and students' Chromebooks are out and on desks, so they're working on them independently from other people or they're collaborating with others. I went through probably seven or eight classrooms today, and with the exception of one, and that was a PowerPoint and a really engaging thing, and actually, those students were on the Chromebooks as well, so it's still continuing, they're still continuing to use them quite a bit. But I made reference to a survey that I did of our faculty of their, sort of, how they see themselves as one-to-one, as using one-to-one in the classrooms, and I think that's a little interesting in terms of what they said about themselves, because we have a little bit larger than a handful of teachers who really consider themselves, you know, pretty good or really, really good users of technology, but, but the better part of our staff saw themselves as, eh, getting familiar with it, just getting to know it. And I think if you looked at the teachers who were involved in the one-to-one the first year, and the pilot the second year, and who have been involved all three years, it's actually a small number of teachers who have been involved in this. Most of our teachers, this is the first year that they've actually been using one-to-one in the classroom, which I think speaks to some degree about the need for, for continuing professional development on teacher use of that in the classroom. So we're, our next, our next delayed opening, we're gonna spend some time with teachers teaching teachers about some of the Google apps and some of those other things that they might feel comfortable with, so I'm looking forward to seeing more, more of those things occurring in our classrooms. I, I had a chance a couple of weeks ago to go to a small high school in Massachusetts to do a NEASC accreditation visit, and I am telling you, I, I wrote this, that this was one of the most meaningful professional experiences I've had in the last ten years. It was amazing, and it was amazing both in terms of what you see sort of schools say they're doing and what they actually are doing, and then the opportunity to sort of reflect on it with them and to talk about what they're doing and how their, how their programs are. I, I can't wait for our May visitation in some ways, based on what I experienced there. So, so I will say, I know there are sort of questions about the value of NEASC, I think that accreditation process, if you, if you take it seriously, if you go in there really being open and honest about what you're doing, I think that's going to tell us an awful lot about who we are at Campbell High School, so I'm excited about that. One, one final note is, caps and gown measurements were taken on December thirteenth, so talking about scheduling and looking ahead here, that process has begun. And one, one final thing is, in relation, stepping back a little bit to Andrea, our students are interested in doing something to honor her and to memorialize her, and as that moves forward, I'll certainly be talking with Jim about that, and we'll be talking with the board about that, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of students who really just were so incredibly supported by her, and not just current students, the alumni response in terms of the social media and those things, it was remarkable. We had actually former students from seven and eight years ago coming to the building and asking what they do and those types of things, so, so I think it will be important things for us students to have a chance to do something of that nature for her.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we have the Program of Studies.
All right. Well, we sent, we sent along the Program of Studies a couple of weeks ago, and we also sent along a, the overview of that, so if I can just pull up my email here quickly and grab that. Yep, okay. So. So, okay, partner, let's go. So, I'm gonna go through the changes, would that be okay with you? And then if you have specific questions, we can refer into the document itself. So, the initial things are boilerplate issues. Dates have been changed, page numbers have been changed. I revised my letter against a former English teacher who don't wanna use the same thing a couple of years in a row. We, within the planner, the courses that had not been approved by PERC were highlighted in yellow. And then we added the comprehensive list of courses, the math embedded courses have been added to this. Okay? If you wanna go through to page four and look at that, we can, or do you want me to just continue to proceed?
Yep, just touch on the changes and that's fine.
Sure, absolutely. So, courses, we changed it to with courses where there is summer work. It actually says within the course description, there is summer work, you need to see the instructor before you leave and those courses are listed in there. And those are predominantly AP and honors courses. So, you'll see those are rigorous, challenging courses and that's that. As far as graduation requirements, we changed the math requirements from three to three and a half, not from three to four, as you will notice. And that is because the state does not actually say you have to have four credits of math. It says you have to have math in four years, in all four years of high school. So, you could take a half-year course that was math embedded, get a half of credit and that would qualify as your fourth, as math in your fourth year. So, it could be three and a half to four credits for a student possibly. We changed the elective credits downward because of that, that half credit there. So, went from seven and a half to seven credits. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Specialty programs here, you look at honors and there was an error in the program. So, we just changed it so it correctly read an additional point five oh calculating to the GPA. And there's an advanced placement section in the program of studies and we changed that to include honors classes, classes that are labeled with the honors to it. And the rationale for that is they wanted, we wanted students to understand that there was a, there's a significant rigor to both of those courses. The only real difference between AP courses and honors courses really is that there is a contract for the AP courses. Students actually have to sign a contract that they understand what those rigorous standards are. And with the AP courses, you're teaching towards an advanced placement test. So, certain curriculum processes and certain things that you really have to cover with those students.
So, they're different, honors and AP are very different, slightly different, I'm just curious.
They're, they're both rigorous and challenging. The AP, however, one prepares you for the advanced placement test, number one. Two, that test, if students do well enough, will qualify them for credits at a variety of colleges and universities for that course if you get a three or four or five.
Well, those are separate sections, you can't take like an AP, you can't take it as an honors class and then take the test to get the AP.
No, the AP courses are distinctly different courses, but we include it in the same section.
So, can you take an AP science class without, placement test without taking AP science?
You can.
So, you don't have to take an AP class to test into any of those advanced placement things?
No, my son took an AP test without taking the course and got a four or five, I'm not sure. He got a...
We have kids that take an AP class on V-Lax and they have to let us know because we are the ones that still have to proctor the exam. So, the past couple of years, we've been proctoring more and more exams for individual students. So, if they don't tell me by now, I have to order the test now.
Right.
Do we have a lot of kids take AP courses online?
Um, I have two this year.
Oh, V-Lax, I'm just curious.
And that was solely because they couldn't, one, could not fit it into a schedule.
There's some macroeconomics between the honors and the...
So, how come the V-Lax isn't part of your curriculum book? So, students know it's even there, how would they, I mean?
There is a section in here about V-Lax.
In the book?
There should be. I don't, it's not, it would not necessarily be detailed in terms of courses because they offer a tremendous amount. But the other piece to that is typically the student's gonna take our courses onsite with our instructors. Yeah, yeah. It's rare that they're gonna take our course through V-Lax.
Page thirty-eight.
I just wanted to know what the difference between AP and honors was and what, now I have a bunch better...
V-Lax courses, we count the credit but not the grade. We count the credit, the grade does appear on the transcript, the grade is not calculated into the GPA.
Yep, right.
Which is something that you and I have been talking about.
We've been talking about that, yeah, yep. Any other questions on the honors and AP? I think the other difference with that is that we put down four, number one through four in the honors and AP section.
Oh, in the honors and AP section, right. We just put down what the prerequisites were to get there. A student must have a B plus in the previous class, there is the summer work component. So, we just wanted to reiterate what those prerequisites were there.
For the AP, there was the contract that they had to sign and they also had to be requested into that course by those teachers.
Right then, the sending, or not sending teacher.
The previous grade teacher.
Right, signs as well as the teacher of that AP class and the parent and the student.
So, continuing, yes?
Yep.
Okay, we added AP Spanish, it was left out of last year's program of studies. Testing dates were changed and we wanted to note at the bottom of that that we're not a testing site in April to March. So, CHS is not a testing site for any of the standardized tests. Other schools do offer those, however, students are looking to take SAT tests at other locations. Dual enrollment, we removed anatomy and physiology. We do not have a teacher that's...
Does, yeah. Our teacher doesn't have the qualifications to be certified.
Correct, yep. So, our four-year planning sheet in the program of studies, senior math was changed to a point five credit required. And the wording under grade twelve changed from full year of math to a match course, to a math embedded course or a full year depending on the child. Family and consumer science, food and nutrition's changed, they simply changed wording on that in the opening sentence. And relationships, the class is now open only to juniors and seniors, not sophomores. Social studies, we hopefully, we'll discuss this at the next meeting, but we're hoping to add a new course, the history of hip-hop. I'm sure you're all excited about that, Mr. York. But that actually...
A half a credit or a full credit?
For you, you'll get a full.
So, Justin's got a good proposal there, I'm very supportive of that.
Mr. Baloo's gonna teach it?
Yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, that'll be...
Is there gonna be a music component to it?
Oh, yeah.
How do you teach hip-hop without any music?
I don't know, I might have to go observe.
Music, research...
See, it's gonna be a half credit in music and a full credit in social studies. That'll help get those students that half a credit of music they need.
And half credit in math because it's music, right?
That's right, that's right. They have to learn how to do those moves out there, you know, they'll be having to count numbers or whatever.
So, in our English foundations, community and the individual and our community and the individual, the statement about major projects, that was changed from oral, including oral presentations and a formal research to simply a formal research project. And that stems from some challenges with some students who have difficulties with oral presentations. It's not that they will be deleted completely from those classes and those, but it might be a little different for some students in those classes. American Studies, English and Honors, simply a sentence stating that students will complete a college essay as well as a four-page, four to six-page formal research paper. Honor, Senior English Course Material will include all new PERC-approved novels, which is, I think, standard boilerplate language for us in the district. Oops, I'm sorry, where did I go?
Oh, you just enlarged it.
Okay, okay, we're... And going back a little bit, sorry about this. Litton Film has taken a little bit of a different course description. The course is not going to be significantly different from what you'll see there. And I'm not sure if there was an old description, I mean, we went back to the old description, can you?
I know in talking to Pat Keith, it was that the rigor of the course is not where he wanted that to be.
Yes.
So, he wanted to make sure that the class was a lot more rigorous and a lot less movie watching. So, it involved a lot more writing and essays.
And analyzing.
And analysis versus a lot of watching. Yeah. Excellent.
Yep. And then the PSAT, SAT prep course, that's added, been added in there. ICT is requested by the instructor. Drafting, drafting was removed from the visual performing arts category and is only gonna be listed in the ICT category, okay? It just really seems to make sense that that is more of a technology course than it is an arts course. Mathematics, we added AP, statistics to the flow chart at the start of that section. And pre-calc, we've opened that to sophomores, juniors and seniors and that's predominantly because we have our freshmen coming in with algebra and they're going on to geometry and they may wanna move towards pre-calc. AP Calculus Daily is now gonna be offered to juniors and seniors and again, we have some advanced students coming in that are probably gonna be early adopters to those programs. Take, we removed running start option. We went round and round with the community colleges on this, but they would not accept our current teacher as having the correct credentials, although she has taught this at the community college level where students have received the college credit for it. The school that we're working with would not accept her as a teacher for the course and provide credits for that. We've added a new statistics course, which is just a general statistics. We've made the change for science for the principles of engineering. And proceeding down here, real life physics, that's reverting back to the prior description. Am I correct, Jody, on that one?
Um, instead of...
Oh, it's the half-year, this is the half-year. Correct, yes, as opposed to the four-year. So, that's just the changed course description and all of that. We did for technology education, basic woodworking has had just a description change to it. But one of the things we've done for those, the other tech ed classes is the instructor really felt it was important for those students to advance to those upper level woods and building trades. They really need to take that basic woodworking course to develop those skills for that. So, we thought it was probably an important step that you shouldn't just jump into building trades without having some of those basic skills. And that's typical of your CTE programs, that students are expected to meet those prerequisites. In art, we removed drafting as we just mentioned above. Digital art, we changed the description. Some of the specific software technology has changed in that classroom. So, we've removed that software terminology and changed the description to using tablets because it's time to stop using the language of technology as well. Advanced graphic design, we removed the honors option sentence. That's an option for any class that a student takes at Campbell. So, if we don't offer it as an honors option, students can do the additional work, the assignments, the assessments in order to meet the honors. So, there was redundant having it in there, it's stated elsewhere. World language, we removed all the French classes, they were in there last year, they're no longer there. And CTE, we edited Pinkerton Academy courses per their requirements. And I would like to say one thing, that Jody is an amazing counseling director and so much of the work that's done in this is her work. So, she's here publicly, we need to recognize her, she just does an amazing job.
I have a photo of this. Computer. Thank you.
Do they want to have any questions?
Are we done with CTE classes?
We stopped two years ago, three years ago.
Okay, just check it, so it's just Alvern and Pinkerton?
Mm-hmm. And Alvern and Pinkerton reps from CTE will be coming in February ninth to meet with all sophomores, the sophomore class, to talk about their programs. And then that following Wednesday, the fifteenth, all sophomores are gonna be going into the cafeteria to have a work session to enter their course requests. So, they'll have that presentation and then have it fresh in their minds and then they'll be able to go in and enter.
When they'll have their Chromebooks to do it, that's awesome.
That's why I said we're going to cafeteria, I don't need to break out.
So, when it says that they can go online on January twenty-second and start filling in their classes, that's not true?
Well, Andrea, Susan and I met for many hours today in between some fire drills.
Yep.
And that is not gonna be accurate because we want the kids to have staff there to ask questions from. And we have gone into the health classes, so we did work with many, not all, many sophomores in their health classes already, gave them a sheet, talked them through it. But we want everybody together at that time so that you have advisors, you have counselors there to really answer any of those last questions too.
So, it's not anything, you know, it's just basically a conversation for parents to have it on with their kid, give them a general idea what they'd like to see out of their schedule. When will that schedule become available to the parents to make sure that whatever the grade is, that child has signed up for what he or she has been requested?
Are you saying when are the students gonna see their actual schedules?
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, I guess the question is, is we're gonna put the, you're gonna, I think you're doing it juniors, sophomores, freshmen. And I think the eighth graders are coming in February also.
We are going to see the twenties?
The twenties, yeah.
It's February. So, so pretty much electronically, the schedule should be...
Electronically, this is the part of the job that you, he's looking at me going, what are you doing? I said, months.
Yes, months.
So, kids go ahead and enter their request, then I have to look at the numbers and say, are we gonna even run this now? Because I had four kids sign up for this. So, then, oh, we're not gonna run that, then I have to go back to those kids and say, what am I now picking next? Put them into there and then I have to go to make sure that they've met the prerequisites for all the courses that they've picked. If they haven't, then I'm going around doing prerequisite waivers if they need. I was talking to Nate about maybe a little bit of a different system instead of me running around doing all their work, make the kids be a little bit more accountable themselves.
So, what happens then is the computer will sit there and spew out numbers, 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 numbers and then we'll sit down and we'll mash our heads together, which equals a brain. And at that time, maybe not. And we then sort of look at, okay, we can't run it with three, we can't run it with five, we can't run it with eight. Can we look at the three and five and maybe plug them into a different spot? So, this is a churning, 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 churning that goes on.
Well, and then we have to go into a spreadsheet mode and say, okay, social studies, we've got Nate Cooper, we've got Justin Baloo, we can break it down, buys, and then, okay, how many sections are we running? Okay, so Nate can have five sections of something, if he's gonna do community and he's gonna do this and that, well, then he's unavailable for that.
So, we have to move that course. So, it would be great if we said they plugged in all the courses and there they are and that's what they're going to get. The reality is, it'll take us till...
So, I only say this because I understand your process here. But, you know, colleges do this all the time.
Yeah.
Students go online and fill out their courses and the process seems to work very well on an automated basis. Now, I'm not saying, granted, the kids are a little older, but I don't, I guess my understanding is that, you know, we have some very talented IT people. Might be a nice task for sophomores and seniors and IT groups to get together and try to find a way that automates this thing so it's not a five-month process. and IT groups to get together and try to find a way that automates this thing so it's not a five-month process, basically.
Then they could sell it and make tons of money and then they would...
And that's, and this is infinite campus and whatever its limitations and, and its, you know, strengths are. But, but I think it's not necessarily fair to equate us to a college because they'll run a class with three hundred kids. Or a hundred and fifty kids.
Or they, or they very easily put a cap on it and says it's thirty kids and then everybody else goes to a waiting list.
And, and that...
But you see it in an automated process.
And that's, and that's what this is, but it'll put out a class of two students. And that's where the rub comes in. We can sit here and set the maximum for twelve students, or the minimum, let's say the minimum for twelve students, but you have certain courses that I'm sure you're going to want me to run, that are going to have seven or eight courses. An AP course might, right. So when you try to sort of put all those limitations on and the program spins and spins and spins and spins. So I, I don't disagree with the Andrea Sterns, Andrea Sterns is a really sharp lady, but she, but, but believe me, the three of us sit there and we go round and round and actually, I don't, speaking from my first time actually doing scheduling, last year was not as horrendously awful as I thought it would be. But, again, due to her and due to Andrea, they've had a few, you know, runs around the track on this, but it's still a really complex challenge.
It's actually much easier to do a master's schedule in a large high school. So I would prefer to go to Nashua High South and run their schedule, they can have twenty sections of everything.
Right.
So the discrepancies, what are those?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The conflicts, you know, I'm trying to make sure that these top kids can get in every single AP class, which then blows apart other teachers' schedules and their contracts. So there's so many factors in a little school that give me Nashua any day because I did help with Nashua.
Oh, you can't go to Nashua.
Well, I was there already.
No, correct.
I already commended you.
Correct, twice.
Yeah, it's just a different, it's, it's a...
Oh, it, I, I understand, I understand, but, but I, again, I, I know that, you know, technology is, is great and, and at the same time, technology is, is fearful.
Yeah.
And sometimes we're reluctant to release to the technology because we like to hold on.
Oh, God.
You know?
Wow, tough luck.
Yeah, no, I, I handed it over.
You're ready, you're ready to let it go if you could.
I, we do, I do, I mean, even the back stuff that I was telling you we're doing today, the hours that Andrea and I spent going through every class just to determine, okay, if somebody's in biology now, what classes do we offer that they could potentially be recommended to go into? That took hours and hours, so we had to go through every class, oh, they're in physics, well, they could possibly be recommended to go into this, this. So it's just little, little things that don't matter and that I want my schedule world.
Yeah.
Yeah, time sucker.
As, as someone who's worked at scheduling with a two thousand, three hundred student high school and a five hundred student high school and who has a significant other, who does a lot of the work at the community college level, I, I can tell you that small public high schools that try to be very diverse and the courses that they're offering have a, have a real challenge with scheduling because you have so many singletons and they bump out other kids so quickly. And I, I agree with you, using technology as far as you can, but it, boy, it gets down to a personal one-on-one dialogue with kids about what do you want to take, what can you take, what can you not take, when can, when can you take it? And, and, and I think in a small school, it's extremely difficult trying to meet the needs of all the kids. In a big school, like you said, you've got fifteen or twenty sections and it's, it's a lot easier. And even in, even in, you know, Lucille's, my wife's situation, you know, as, you know, if you have a small number of enrollees in a particular program, it gets challenging. And don't forget in the colleges, they're all, you know, in certain silos. And within that silos, the, the scheduling is very limited. And, and I know some colleges have even gone to a much more limited curriculum so that they don't have the challenge of scheduling, they have a very broad curriculum. And that brings me to the last point, and that is that you as a community, we as a community here in Litchfield, with Campbell specifically, as we walk down the predicted road of reducing enrollment in the high school, are going to have to make some very, very difficult decisions about what can you do and do well with five hundred kids that you can't do and do well with four hundred or three hundred and eighty, three hundred and seventy kids? And how do you ensure the integrity of your core curriculum and still give options? So that will be an ongoing dialogue that Bill, I'm sure, will be in two over the next, probably not starting next year, but certainly starting two or three years after when the current fifth grade hits the high school in three years, the cohort hits pretty hard. So I, I, I think it's, technology has a real big role there, I absolutely agree with you, but I think ultimately in a small school, it's a personal attention to one-on-one thing. And I think ultimately in a small school, that's what makes small schools so damn nice to be in, is it is personalized, you're not just a number. I've been there, I've been a number and I don't like it.
So is there a motion to accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen CHS program of studies versus Campbell?
So may.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain.
And just as, as closing, Mr. Che, I would just like to express my personal appreciation for the hard work that the high school has done under Bill's leadership to get this program of studies significantly cleaned up. And what Jody's done to get it significantly cleaned up over the last couple of years, I think the program of studies is far superior to what it was previous to that and I do believe it's because of leadership at the high school. So thank you, Bill, and thank you, Jody.
Good work.
Yes.
That's the third time we've connected.
That's great.
That's enough.
I must try to reverse the thought.
Very good, thank you very much. That'll bring us to committee reports. And I think the only one that met was budget committee, we met last evening. It was a good presentation, the architect and the project manager were there for the new fire department. That was the main purpose of the meeting last evening, along with the fire chief, to give a very good presentation of their proposed fire department. And I believe if you go online, town site, that it should be available as far as the viewing of last night's meeting along with, they said they're going to try to put it on as soon as possible, so it might, I don't know if it's up or not.
It wasn't this morning, I'm hoping it is tonight.
It, it may be, if not, then I would think by tomorrow that it would be. I mean, there's a lot of very good information there. I believe that tomorrow evening, when they present both budgets, the budget, when the budget committee presents both budgets, they can show the presentation again. But they said the architect was there and the project manager, who I think will, may also be there tomorrow evening if there are any questions, but it was a good presentation and a really good overview of what their process is and what they're looking to do. I think it goes without saying that I think everyone in this town believes that we need a new fire station, just whether or not you agree on that particular fire station will be your decision, so.
We want a safety complex.
So they're offering a five and a half million dollar fire station. I don't think there are any other committee meetings, right? So that will bring us to, I believe we have a second read of GBEA staff ethics.
I, I don't have any further statements, I mean, this is a, it's a, trying to address some behavior that had been reported in a way that makes it legal and also professional, so we have a staff ethics and I don't think there's anything more that has to be said.
I'll make a motion to accept GBEA staff ethics as written.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. And we have a second read on JRV, confidential student information.
Again, this is just a second reading of a document you've had and I, I think that it, you had a pretty thorough discussion about it at the last meeting, so I don't look for any other questions.
Make a motion to...
It's a mandated document, that's essential.
I'll make a motion to accept policy GBEAA slash JRV.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. That will bring us to draft minutes from twelve twenty two thousand seventeen, non-public session. I believe they were not directed, or they were, I'm sorry, I didn't remember reading them. I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes from twelve twenty two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Abstain.
Public input, there's no public. Before we go back into non-public just for a few moments, just so we can go back to the first non-public, I just want to take a moment and thank the town for allowing us to conduct our meetings here at town hall, which I think is a little bit more of a meeting setting.
And the seats are better.
Yeah.
Chairs are nice.
I noticed you fell asleep.
But again, I want to, I want to thank the town, not only the town, but there are other organizations that change their schedules around a little bit, I mean, to accommodate us, so, and I, I, again, I think it's a much better and professional place to have meetings. So again, thank you to the town.
Well-stated, very well-stated. And thank you to the town manager for working with us to make this happen.
Ross had the manifest, right? So let's go back to the non-public for a moment.
During number, are we going into non-public?
Yeah.
Dust off that trophy.
I was going to say, see a trophy.
Yeah, you better bling it up. There's a, there's a skinny thing, all right.
All right, say yes first.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, Scott, we're done.